Uh. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance and then we'll do a roll call. Um. I'll leave this in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, we'll start with Commissioner Hill with roll call. State if you have any conflicts.
Jonathan Hill, no conflicts. Andrew South, no conflicts.
Lisa Jensen, no conflicts.
Daniel Gonzalez, no conflicts.
Robert Knudsen, no conflicts.
Barbara De Soto, no conflicts.
Right, uh. I'm gonna skip a portion on the decorum that we normally read. There's really only one member from the public here. Um. Just in expedite this meeting. Um, we'll begin with item number one. Charles Matheny requests an ordinance text amendment to subsection fourteen point three eight point one zero five one E. Pro city code to change the number of allowable tenant wall signs from two to three downtown neighborhood. Um. Our staff member Mary Barnes will be presenting. Thank you.
Thank you. Pretty excited. It's my first time presenting to you guys. Okay, uh, thank you, Commissioner Gonzalez, for that great introduction. Um, so the proposal tonight is essentially what you said. Um, it's to allow three tenant signs on um public street facing building facades. Um, on buildings out of five stories plus um within the downtown zones. Um, like you said, right now, the code only allows two signs. What I hope to do with this um presentation is go through um the an overview of the proposal, review the um reasons behind the proposal. Um, look at any additional impacts and then go over um why staff is recommending this item for approval. Um, so first, the applicant, um Mr. Matheny behind me is requesting an ordinance amendment to add a third sign. He specifically wants to add a third sign to the west facing facade of his building at eighty-six North University Avenue. You can see it here. Um, that northwest corner of the building, the Harris sign wraps around the building. He wants to do the same thing in the southwest corner. Um, and there's a mockup in the middle just kind of to show what that's probably gonna look at uh look like. If this amendment gets um recommended for approval and then approved by the council. Anyways, um, let's see. Let me go forward. So that's just an overview of what what the applicant is wanting to do with this ordinance amendment and something that we might see in the future if it gets passed. Um, some affected areas slash zones in the city. Um, we, that's the D T one, D T two, I T O D, G W and W G zones. Can say that ten times fast if I don't recommend it. Anyways, um. These are the, they're kind of more central zones. They're the um zones where there allows these um really big um buildings, the higher taller stories. Um, in your staff reports, I I outlined those zones as shown on those maps, but I accidentally, um. It's my third week here. Give me a break. Just kidding. Um, but um I accidentally missed this one zone up in the more um northwest corner of the city. It's the river's edge development that was rezoned to I T O D in twenty twenty. Currently, there's no um five-story buildings planned for this development. Um, it, the tallest will be four stories. So, you know, this ordinance amendment, while it does affect this zone, this specific development won't have. Um, won't have any tenant identification signs. Also, they're residential buildings, right? Um, some reasons for the proposed amendment. Um, number one, uh, class A multi-story office buildings often have two or more significant. Um, anchor tenants that usually serve different um segments of the market in this specific building. Case in point, Wells Fargo Harris Investment Group. Um, so um these tenants will often want to co-brand their building like we talked about in the work meeting. So um this amendment will increase opportunities for businesses to advertise on their building. Um, and then. Um, as mentioned in the general plan analysis within uh your staff report, um, this. Ordinance amendment would not negatively affect the public purpose of the sign code. Um, it appears that the purpose is to make sure there's not an overwhelming amount of. Signs on these taller buildings. Increasing it from two to three would not create an overwhelming amount of signs as shown in those um those mockup. Um, pictures a little, um, just a few slides back. Um, anyways, also, the general plan states. Um, it is important that the city continues to communicate with local business leaders to understand how they can best support the business community. Removing unnecessary code requirements and policy impediments can be key in making sure Provo has a healthy and prosperous economic environment. So this um, this ordinance amendment could possibly also remove an obstacle from the code language for businesses that are wanting to locate in Provo. It also allows the applicant to finish up his cohesive signage theme and it's supported by the Development Services Department. Um, going through some impacts of this ordinance amendment, um, kind of already hopped on what um, what it's going to impact. It's just those um public street facing, you know, facades of buildings on the five stories plus in those zones, those five zones. Um, I went through, because it's such a small area, I went through, clicking through Google Maps took ages, by the way. Um, and I um highlighted just all the buildings that are five stories plus. Um, they're mostly apartment buildings, city center is one of them. Um, there's two hotels. They're, they're buildings that may not take advantage of this. Ordinance amendment, but there are a few that may, you know, in the future. Um, I do wanna say that in your staff report, I say that. It includes about eleven buildings. It's actually thirteen. I don't know why I said eleven, but it's thirteen. So um right now, thirteen buildings would be technically affected by this ordinance amendment. And of course, any new five-story plus buildings would um would have, would be able to take advantage of this amendment as well. Um, finally, um, we are recommending, staff is recommending approval on this item. Um, this ordinance amendment, it's not going to decrease the design standards. Um, any new sign, you know, any third sign, any new sign that's created with this ordinance amendment would still have to be designed. You know, adequately attractively as shown in the signage code, as per signage code right now. Um, it will help to meet the goals of the general plan like I kind of went through and um it's also in your packet. And, you know, increasing the the amount of tenant identification signs is minimal change, but it could allow more I um tenants to identify. Their businesses and multi-story, multi-tenant buildings. Do you have any, any questions for me? Yes.
Um, I, I was just looking at these pictures. That you have shown on the mockup, um, and realized that there's. There's signage for Wells Fargo and Harris already on the ground level. And I know we kind of talked a little bit about this when we learned about the sign ordinance, but do those, are those additional signs? Because they have ground-level businesses that they can have a sign there?
Yeah, I believe they um they fall into the other categories of the wall signs. This is specifically for the, the signs that are, you know, in those upper stories.
And if I remember correctly, the upper, the signs in the upper stories had to be in the top one or two floors. So I'm wondering why the Harris sign. Is down lower?
Yeah, so um, so Aaron kind of went over this, but it seems like sometimes with the sign, sorry, sometimes with the signage code, um, as long as it is. At that floor that it's required to be at, then it can trickle down like we saw in that startup, the startup building, you know, picture during the work meeting. Um, we kind of make sure that it, it is, it starts at that, you know, location and then it can.
So it was the top two floors before the step, the setback, and that's why it can be so low on this building? Okay. Um. I, I guess I was just confused about if each um ground level can have a sign with square footage according to the number of linear feet. Why there were so many of these Wells Fargo and Harris signs on that bottom level? Cause I sort of assumed that, I mean, Wells Fargo makes sense because there, but is Harris on the other side of the building, so they really deserve the ground level sign?
Yeah, I'm, okay.
Okay. I just wanted to make, I'm, I'm always, I'm always trying to look at possible changes, like this looks really sweet, the way the Harris sign wraps around the corners. But somebody else might do something really ugly, and so that additional sign might be something we really regretted. So I wanna make sure I understand.
Definitely makes sense. And it does say in the, here, my last slide, well, is the proposed text, but it does say. Um, that with the design, like the letters can't exceed three feet, it can only be letters or logos, you know, things like, it can't be. A picture, it's gotta be a word or a smaller.
What if, what if a logo is not attractive or is obscene or something? Does that still fall within the parameter of that's okay?
I don't know how it is. Well, again, third week, but maybe I should just let you talk on that.
I mean, I know this actually, this particular question, it wouldn't matter whether there was one, two, or three of those. If we didn't like them, we didn't like them, but how does that get affected?
Right, so that, that comes down to uh freedom of speech. It's been taken to, you know, higher courts.
They can do whatever they want.
They can, they can pretty much have their logo represent however they like. Um, I'd say the most. Um, controversial one that I've seen in Provo is a haircut place that had a severed hand with scissors.
Okay.
So yeah, it does happen, um, but as long as they meet the size and, and other different requirements.
So unless their logo itself has that image in it, on these particular signs that we're discussing, we're only gonna see letters for the most part.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm looking at this. We're talking about tenant identification signs, right? Now that Wells Fargo at the top, that's the building identification sign, right? So I'm only seeing one tenant identification sign on here. Wouldn't the other one just be the second one, not the third?
My understanding is that the Wells Fargo one, there's that Wells Fargo and Harris Investment are um. Are tenants of the same building and um, we call it the Wells Fargo Building because that's immediately, you know, recognizable. Oh, I know where that building is. It's easier than saying, you know, eighty-six North University Avenue.
Uh, you, Mr. Harris, uh, you'll have a, or Mr. Matheny, you'll have a chance to respond it in, in just a few minutes, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Just, not to be rude or anything, it's just so we avoid crosstalk and it's over, it's hard to hear for me, other commissioners, and then for the record. Appreciate it.
So what you're saying is that Wells Fargo sign at the top isn't a building identification sign, it is also a tenant.
Tenant identification.
Identification sign.
They're a tenant of that building.
Okay.
That makes me, Mr. Hill, it makes me think, what if it was just like the downtown building, like some of the apartment buildings have names? So what if it was just given a name? Would that then be taken out of the sign count as a tenant identification sign?
If it's, I believe that, oh, maybe this is something better for Aaron, but I believe that building identification signs like uh Provo City Center, if we said. Provo City Center up the top, or if we called this the downtown building up the top, we're the owners, so we're identifying the building. But if we had chip in here and they wanted to put a sign, or Wells Fargo and they want to put a sign, then that would be, that would become a tenant identification. Does that make sense? So if the owners of this building wanna call it the downtown building, they could put a, a building identification sign on it. But uh, right now, these are just tenant identification signs.
But if they put a building identification sign that wasn't the name of a tenant, would they then be entitled to two more tenant signs or just one?
Two, like, like in other words, do, does the code distinguish between a building name and then a tenant names?
So in the past, people have used that um as a workaround to get an additional sign, um, back before the Angel. Building was the Angel Building. It was the, um, I think it was a real estate company that was in there. Um, just, just the next block over. Um, and they needed additional signage for another tenant, uh, but they were maxed out, so they decided to call it. The whatever real estate building, like calling that the building name, so they can have an additional tenant name on the building. So, so it is a loophole that, that you're catching, uh, that, that people can take advantage of.
Yes.
Um, other than the applicant, have you talked with any of the other um building owners or has there been in, in the last, I don't know? I, I think you said in twenty twenty was when this change was enacted. So has there been any discussion since then with other people that are interested in this?
So in twenty twenty, that new I T O Ds or was resigned to River's Edge Development. And um, as far as I know, we haven't had anyone else come in for a signage amendment for this. Um, the Harris Investment Group would be the first question, um, and that, you know, resulted in this ordinance amendment.
Some of, some of these areas, some of these zones have uh, are, are, aren't, aren't part of their development standards. They include a design review committee.
Yeah, like, um, and also the, like, the downtown.
And does that, yeah, does that include uh signage as part of the design review? Or that's completely separate with, it's, it's completely separate from architectural. Um. I don't like, it's the way I see it, the, the limitation is the, the lettering and logo is, is really kind of the limitation of the signage. Okay. Does anyone else have any other questions? Did? I'm not seeing any others. I think we got it. Um. Thank you, uh, Ms. Barnes. Um, we'll go ahead and have the. Uh, the applicant come up. Uh, you'll have fifteen minutes for your presentation. Uh, we have, a- as you know, we've, we've reviewed the, had a. Primer on the sign ordinance uh in our study session, and each of the staff member or each of the commissioners have read the staff reports. If there's anything uh you'd like to add or clarify or uh please, please do so right now.
Great, thank you. Uh, my name is Chuck Matheny. I thought, uh, Mary did a really good job of kind of explaining. Uh, the purpose of the change of sign ordinance that we were looking for. Um, originally, when we um went to get a sign permit. For the signs that we were intending to put on the building, the, the wrapped Harris sign on each corner. Uh, we weren't allowed to do that on the southwest corner, on the front-facing eighty-six uh North University Avenue because of the limitation of two signs. And uh, there aren't very many, as Mary said, uh, very many buildings over five stories. Um, and we felt like, uh, because of our unique purpose in uh what we do as a company. That we wanted to have this tasteful uh signage that wrapped both corners uh that front onto uh, uh, University Avenue. So that's the purpose of, of the, of the sign change request. Um, we also didn't want to uh do anything un, that wasn't tasteful, that didn't look professional. But we clearly wanted to identify uh this building as the Harris Financial Center. And uh, we are, and have a very different purpose in trying to attract uh business, financial businesses to our building. That are complimentary to what we do. And uh Harris uh Investment Group is a real estate company. And uh, we have several clients, some of which would like to occupy space in the building. Um, we have a large tenant, the uh Acadia Spas, who's occupying space on the first floor and the second floor. That's relocating to a building they've purchased on uh, uh, University Parkway, kind of across the street from the Walmart. So they'll be leaving and vacating a significant chunk of space, and we just want to attract other businesses. Uh, that would be complimentary and financial services to, to what we're doing. So that was the purpose and reason for uh the sign ordinance request. Um, it's interesting, when I uh was answering some of the questions in the application. Uh, they said, well, look to the Provo City uh development guidelines to see kind of what, what you can or can't do, or what you should do, and what the goals of the city are to see if these match. And it was interesting that they had two pictures of our building uh in that development code and guideline for Provo City. So it is a very distinct and unique architectural building that uh people can identify. If you ask anybody, you know, where's the Wells Fargo Building, everybody knows. And so we want to co-brand it now as the, the Harris Building and the Wells Fargo Building and, and hopefully that, that's in compliance with. The, the spirit of what you're trying to do with your sign ordinances. So, and that's, if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer anything. Sorry, I'm kind of losing my voice here, so you'll have to forgive me.
Appreciate it. Um, any, anyone have questions for the applicant? I'm not seeing any others. I think we got it. Um. Thank you, uh, Ms. Barnes. Um, we'll go ahead and have the. Uh, the applicant come up. Uh, you'll have fifteen minutes for your presentation. Uh, we have, a- as you know, we've, we've reviewed the. Had a primer on the sign ordinance uh in our study session, and each of the staff member or each of the commissioners have read the staff reports. If there's anything uh you'd like to add or clarify or uh please, please do so right now.
Great, thank you. Uh, my name is Chuck Matheny. I thought, uh, Mary did a really good job of kind of explaining. Uh, the purpose of the change of sign ordinance that we were looking for. Um, originally, when we um went to get a sign permit. For the signs that we were intending to put on the building, the, the wrapped Harris sign on each corner. Uh, we weren't allowed to do that on the southwest corner, on the front-facing eighty-six uh North University Avenue because of the limitation of two signs. And uh, there aren't very many, as Mary said, uh, very many buildings over five stories. Um, and we felt like, uh, because of our unique purpose in uh what we do as a company. That we wanted to have this tasteful uh signage that wrapped both corners uh that front onto uh, uh, University Avenue. So that's the purpose of, of the, of the sign change request. Um, we also didn't want to uh do anything un, that wasn't tasteful, that didn't look professional. But we clearly wanted to identify uh this building as the Harris Financial Center. And uh, we are, and have a very different purpose in trying to attract uh business, financial businesses to our building. That are complimentary to what we do. And uh Harris uh Investment Group is a real estate company. And uh, we have several clients, some of which would like to occupy space in the building. Um, we have a large tenant, the uh Acadia Spas, who's occupying space on the first floor and the second floor. That's relocating to a building they've purchased on uh, uh, University Parkway, kind of across the street from the Walmart. So they'll be leaving and vacating a significant chunk of space, and we just want to attract other businesses. Uh, that would be complimentary and financial services to, to what we're doing. So that was the purpose and reason for uh the sign ordinance request. Um, it's interesting, when I uh was answering some of the questions in the application. Uh, they said, well, look to the Provo City uh development guidelines to see kind of what, what you can or can't do, or what you should do, and what the goals of the city are to see if these match. And it was interesting that they had two pictures of our building uh in that development code and guideline for Provo City. So it is a very distinct and unique architectural building that uh people can identify. If you ask anybody, you know, where's the Wells Fargo Building, everybody knows. And so we want to co-brand it now as the, the Harris Building and the Wells Fargo Building and, and hopefully that, that's in compliance with. The, the spirit of what you're trying to do with your sign ordinances. So, and that's, if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer anything. Sorry, I'm kind of losing my voice here, so you'll have to forgive me.
Appreciate it. Um, any, anyone have questions for the applicant? I'm not seeing any questions for you.
Good, it's Valentine's Day. Let's get home early.
Thanks, uh, go ahead and have a seat.
Thanks.
Uh, we'll open this up for, to the public hearing. To hearing for public comments, if there's any neighborhood district chairs. I don't see any. Is there any member of the public here? I don't see any. Uh. Well, let me just, let me just open that up and hold it for a few more seconds to see if anyone comes in. I don't wanna deny anyone chance to, to come in last minute. We'll go ahead and close the, the public hearing, uh, public comment portion of the hearing. Uh. And then we'll have uh commissioners, we have a chance to discuss this right now. Um. Yeah, I, I'll start with it, just a few thoughts. Um. I could see the. I, I'm, I think I'm comfortable with this. Um. The number of signs. And it's debatable, honestly, I guess, for aesthetics. Um. Although I, I do recognize, I, I recognize the need when there's uh. I mean, most of these buildings that are listed in the, in the study, the little table that uh. Staff member Barnes made were single, they're single occupants without any other tenants. Uh, this, this one and a couple others are a little bit unique in that, um. There are multiple tenants and, and as a business, you know, I could see the need for uh sign and brand identity. Uh, I can also see the need in the future as buildings get taller. Uh, this ordinance would need to be updated or changed. When we start getting over ten stories, uh, if and when that happens. Um. And I'm, I think I'm comfortable with the. The signage so far, it's limited to letters and logos. Um. I, I think the lettering itself is somewhat of a logo. Uh, I mean, it's picked specifically for, you know, Wells Fargo has a very iconic. Their lettering itself is a logo, besides the stagecoach and, and same with the, uh, circus tricks for that matter. But anyways, I'd love to hear any other thoughts from commissioners. Go ahead, uh.
I think for me, for me, I kind of default to being as flexible as possible, right? I think it only applies to the downtown zones. It's not a huge change. Um, I can't see how having a third sign is gonna significantly degrade the quality of life in Provo kind of thing. And so I think this is an area where. We can easily be flexible on this.
Commissioner Johnson?
Um, I agree that this, it's, I like the balance that a third sign per, gives here and. Um, it doesn't scare me. I think I like the look of it. I just always, um. Worry about what somebody else will do with the same flexibility. They could have three completely different companies. Um, and even though it's limited to lettering, it's. Not attractive, different colors, different um fonts, it's, it become, I, I keep thinking of like big downtowns and you don't usually see multiple. Um, company names across the big high-rise. So I'm not trying to say we shouldn't, we shouldn't do this. I'm just like saying the things that make me, make me pause. Um, we know from the, our work meeting discussion, there have been other buildings, like Novell Building, that have asked for third signs. So we know if we change this, there will be others that would probably jump in and, and be happy to have that. Um. I wonder if there's a way to circumvent this with a conditional approval instead of opening it up with a text change so that it applies to everyone. That's probably an extreme solution, but I'm just throwing that out there. And um, the thing I did note is that on page four and five of the staff report. In the staff analysis where it lists the things with, that comply with the general plan, I did, I did like the. That doing something like this could attract quality businesses to the downtown area. In the staff analysis where it lists the things with, that comply with the general plan, I did, I did like the, that doing something like this could attract quality businesses to the downtown area. Which Mr. Matheny also pointed out, so. Like, I'm ninety-nine percent totally fine with changing this, but there's just that one percent that, that always makes me worry what somebody else would do with the same latitude. So.
Well, I, I, I mean, meaning like it, somewhere down the road, someone could say, oh, you went from two to three, let's do three to four, or.
More just that every building over five stories will suddenly decide they want a third sign and pretty soon we have a skyline of. Labels.
Right, like a.
Which may or may not be bad, but it just could become chaotic if that's not what we're going for.
Yeah. Uh, I'm willing to entertain a motion. Anyone wanna make a motion on this?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move that the Planning Commission recommend approval to the proposed text amendment to the Provo City Council for item one. Text amendment to subsection fourteen point three eight point one oh five to change the number of allowable tenant wall signs from two to three.
Is there a, a, any discussion or amendments on the motion? A second on the motion?
Oh, second.
Uh, let's go ahead and vote, uh, starting with Commissioner Hill.
Aye.
Aye.
I can vote nay, just to make sure that my concerns hang there in the air for a while.
Understood. Uh, I'll vote aye.
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 Uh, the vote is five, one. Uh, recommending approval. Yeah, and with that, we'll. Will, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
My move that we adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second? All right, uh, votes, aye.
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 All right, thank you. For the record. Thank you. Thank you.